Okay, thank you very much and welcome everyone. Thank you for attending. Another webinar town hall meeting we're doing to bring judicial branch employees up to date on the status of COVID-19 in Delaware. I'm pleased once again to welcome Dr. Alfred Bacon, who you've heard from before. Dr. Bacon is an infectious disease expert. Working at Christiana Care and is on the front lines of the pandemic in Delaware. We're very happy to have him as a not only here today, but as a consultant to the court system and the judicial branch. He has been instrumental in advising us on safety protocols. And safe practices in our judicial facilities across the state and we can't thank him enough. Recognizing how busy he is with patient care to take time to help us out as well. Dr. Bacon, without any further ado, if you want to start with your slides and give us an update and then we'll. I'll have some questions for you to follow up.
Chief Justice, thank you for that introduction and I'm pleased to be with you again today discussing the status of COVID-19 disease nationally, but also. In the state of Delaware, my assumption is my slides are currently being viewed. Is that correct?
That's correct. I can see them.
Good. So this is where we were, I believe, when we last talked, which was I early September perhaps, but this is the epidemic curve epidemic curve for COVID-19. For the whole United States and what you can see is obviously beginning in the. March timeframe where a state of emergency was declared subsequently that. Two week timeframe afterwards, the disease peaked nationally began to wane. And this is what I describe as the southern swing. This was the New York East Coast high density population arena. Subsequently, Florida, Texas, Arizona states took off. And then as those areas gain some control, I would be cautious saying significant control gained some control. The disease waned nationally and now we're seeing a significant uptick, which if you trace this farther up. This is a frightening curve. Quite frankly, this is the swing we're seeing in the. Middle of the country, the plain states, for example, where despite the fact that we've had data on this virus and public health. Information on this virus since March. I'm concerned that there were essentially unprepared for the events that are now playing out. This remains the major issue with this disease state case fatality rate by age. Four different countries reviewed Spain, South Korea, Italy and China. As you can see, it remains a fatal disease for those over 80 that acquire it anywhere from 13% to 20% of people with. COVID-19 over the age of 80 will die from this disease and certainly age over 70 and 60 and high risk groups. That must be discussed as well is significant mortality. I will say that this remains 10 times the fatality ratio for regular old influenza. So the inappropriate comments made that this is just the flu need to be completely understood as false. I'm now seeing a wide wider array of populations at Christiana Care and in Delaware Delaware seeing more 40 year olds affected. If 180 year olds are infected and 20% pass away and we're now seeing 40 year olds infected and I think I'm going to see one die today. You can imagine that the number of 40 year olds infected maybe 10 times as much. As those 80 year olds and they're out in the world, they're hopefully being cautious, but typically not going to work, trying to make a living. Suffering from pandemic fatigue. And so we're seeing increasing spread of virus due to many factors such as that. But I'm clearly seeing it reach down into the 50 and 40 and 30 year old age group now. A map of the country looking at disease state and the incidence of disease and populations. Maine is probably the safest place to be in the United States right now. And this graph, the color coding reflects. Number of individuals per hundred thousand population. Maine has zero to 13 individual cases per hundred thousand population Vermont as well. Delaware is in the 28 per hundred thousand population to 40 per hundred thousand population. As you recall, this disease entered through New York and the West Coast and then spread through high density areas, Florida, Texas, Arizona, San Francisco. Seattle, Washington, and then Chicago and the Midwest were hit. These areas are experiencing up to 200 to 300 per hundred thousand. That's tenfold higher than the state of Delaware. And this is an area which is not a high density population base. This is not New York City, people living on top of one another. The human density in this area is far less suggesting this virus is very aggressive at acquiring other individuals to infect. And spreads very easily, particularly when public health measures are not adequately followed, which I'm fearful is the case. Delaware's epidemic curve as of November, mid-November, looking back into the May timeframe. Upward, this is the spike that we saw with hospitalizations in April and May where almost overwhelmed the institutions, but we did quite well, I think with that. For a point of reference, June 28th, there were a total of 135 new cases reported that day. This was a really nice timeframe. I took a week off from work. We had a little downtime. As you can now see, moving through July 4th weekend, moving through Labor Day weekend, moving through schools reopening, moving into the fall. This number is now almost 480 per day. And if you look at the comparison to back when things were very difficult in April and May. The numbers are strikingly and concerningly quite similar. I would reflect on the, I would suggest that our numbers hospitalized will increase, et cetera. So where are Delawareans getting this virus? If you look at the data from one week's worth of individuals reporting October 18 to 24, about a month ago. 125 cases reviewed, where do they acquire COVID-19 on tracing? A significant percentage, this is almost 40 to 45% of that population acquired it by going to a restaurant. Another significant percentage required at religious acquired at religious services. There's a caveat here. These are have been parsed out as more likely to be high concentration services with significant singing and lack of masks. That's an important discussion. Some people went to house parties, not a very good idea. Some people went to the gym, not a very good idea. And then of course their beachgoers and weddings, I can't tell you how often I'm seeing patients on the front lines now who quote. I went to a funeral with 30 people and a week later I was told Uncle Bill had COVID and now. Almost all the people from that that experience are hospitalized. And we've seen deaths in that environment. So this tells me, don't go to a restaurant, don't well, don't go to church unless you're very cautious. My pastor was very upset that religious services were far more common than bars for acquisition of disease. I would comment that most bars have become quote restaurants by definition, because you can't be in one unless they serve food. So I would include bars, excuse me, in the restaurant arena. House parties, now we know Delaware has new restrictions, 30% capacity in restaurants was declared yesterday. No more than 10 people at a gathering at home. I have pleas for the upcoming Thanksgiving. Mine will be virtual. I would encourage you to have a virtual Thanksgiving as much as you can. So that you can have more Thanksgivings together in the future to be blunt. I think we have to be blunt now. I'm struck by the the current status. This is, I believe, hospitalizations to as we move forward as of November 16, there are 153 hospitalized. In all the state of Delaware, these numbers are rising. I guarantee you it's 10 to 15% higher even two days later. The numbers are clearly increasing. That's my personal experience. In Delaware, we follow the percent of persons testing positive back in May and June, this number was 5.85%. And you can make a case that you're testing mostly symptomatic people. However, as you expand your testing, you get a much better view of what. The people on the ground are seeing, we're now at least 12% my, I do believe are close to 15%. Of all individuals tested for COVID are positive for COVID based on good standard testing techniques. That means that when you walk down the street, one out of nine to one out of eight people you're walking next to have COVID disease. Many are asymptomatic and it can be transmitted asymptomatic. COVID testing remains a point of discussion. The gold standard remains are, you know, reverse transcript taste, real time PCR testing, nasorpharyngeal swab. That is the gold standard. The trouble is it takes longer and I think you'll find that the longer a test takes to come back, the better the test is. This detects viral RNA in their testing. The current data suggests that nasorpharyngeal swabs have a false negative rate anywhere from 3.5 to 30%. That wide range of false negative rate means you may have disease with a false negative test. The reason we're seeing a wide false negative range is that it depends on the examiner, the skill set of the person shoving that thing up your nose. But also depends on the stage of disease in which you're tested. Some individuals early on will be falsely negative despite having active disease. And and that's a point of discussion frequently. We're now also seeing the use of the oral swab PCR test. This is an excellent alternative. The data on this that I've reviewed suggests it may be as good or maybe even better than nasorpharyngeal swab. That doesn't mean it's faster. That means it turnaround time will be the same because it's a PCR test, but it may be more sensitive. They're all very specific. If you have a positive test, no one can tell you it's a false positive test, although that is discussed in some areas. I want to make a distinction with antigen detection testing. This is not detecting the RNA or the genetic material of the virus. This is detecting an antigen or a protein on the virus surface. These can be done very rapidly and this is the basis of the current rapid oral testing you're seeing being used in nursing homes and extended care facilities. The problem with this test is it's very rapid and my comment would be that rapid tests more often have often have less sensitivity and it will not be as. They will not detect as much virus as the gold standard testing. Probably the data I've seen may suggest the rapid antigen tests may miss up to 30% of people who are truly infected. This is a very good test to use in the setting of a nursing home though, because you want quick rapid turnaround. And you're going to screen people two or three times a week in some settings. That's expensive. But this is an area where you must identify true positives because you're dealing with high risk patient populations, not the general population. I don't think the antigen test is being expanded to non healthcare arenas. I've been tested only once and that was because I had to travel to a state where you had to quarantine without a test. We're not testing healthcare workers on an aggressive regular basis in the hospital that I'm aware of in my units. So you're going to be tested if you're a close contact or you have symptoms. Number one, what is close contact? The CDC has changed this definition to some extent. You have been in close contact with a COVID patient if you're within six feet of someone who has COVID. For a total of 15 minutes, even if you have a mask on, even if you have a mask on and that's 15 minutes over the course of a whole day. Three times, five minutes apiece, those exposures add up. And so that definition changed about a month ago from the CDC. You're in a close contact if you provided care at a home to someone who was sick with COVID. Or if you've had direct physical contact with a person hugged or kissed them. We're all not doing much hugging and kissing lately. That's an aside, obviously. Or if you shared eating utensils or drinking utensils, or if they sneeze or cough or get droplets on you, I think that speaks for itself, quite frankly. I also don't think it's well defined when the best time to test someone is who's come in contact with another human with COVID. It's very clear. The incubation timeframe is two to 14 days. My advice has been if you're in contact with a COVID patient and you're not symptomatic, you should wait until you have symptoms. Or three to five days post exposure will probably be the earliest time you would have a positive test. And if it's still negative, you don't trust that test. Disease transmission remains clear cut. Droplet is the classic form of transmission. I will say airborne transmission is getting much more discussion now, particularly as we move indoors. If you think about airborne transmission related to airflow in a room, that's certainly an issue and there is data that if someone coughs. The virus can remain on a droplet in the air for up to two to three hours, then landing on a surface. This is truly not been a well documented mode of transmission. Droplet is the key mode of transmission surfaces. Once again, often hand contact surfaces, doorknobs, bathroom. Doors on entry. We talked about close contact incubation, probably one less day. We used to say three to 14 days. We now say two days is possible in terms of getting active disease. Or having your test become positive. Average onset of disease remains 5.5 days. I'll tell you, if you've been exposed to COVID. And you're out 10 days, you're in a pretty good spot frankly, but never say never and 14 days is quite reasonable. Asymptomatic carriers may transmit. There's discussion about children's transmitting, particularly in school environments. I don't think we're seeing children transmit to adults aggressively. I would worry about daycare centers, the secretions are all over the place in daycare centers. But I do think asymptomatic carriers can transmit to humans and we're seeing more of that, particularly young populations. That acquire disease and have a sniffle for a day or two and they can transmit it. So that remains a topic of discussion. An important discussion is when you feel you're recovered. The term recovery here does not mean that you are through with the disease or you're healthy. It means you're no longer infectious. You may still have a positive COVID nasal swab, but for example. But if you had disease on October 30th and you were sick and you were tested on October 30th. 10 days later, November 10th, you no longer felt to be infectious. If you had mild disease, you're an outpatient, you're sick briefly. If you've been quite ill, severe disease, or you have immune disease, for example, lymphoma, underlying malignancy. Your your immune status is not normal. We wait 20 days to say no longer infectious. You can't go wrong waiting 20 days, but for purposes of work in the hospital and as an outpatient, I use 10 days as my cutoff. For when you can be around other human beings after having active COVID disease without fever and doing well.
Doctor, just to clarify on that point, you could still have a positive test even at the end of that 10 day period though, right?
That's really critical here. The answer is yes. We're seeing people with positive tests out 30, 40, 50 days even some of these patients. But they're not infectious at that point in time. Thank you. And that's actually really important distinction. This is a on the bottom of the slide is a CDC fax link. To look at things such as mode of spread as we've discussed, the concept of quarantine versus isolation. Isolation is for someone who has active disease known COVID, who you are at higher risk of acquiring disease from if you come in contact. You isolate that person, everything in the room stays in the room. Quarantine is where you have been exposed and there's a risk you may develop disease. So you have to be worried about those 24 hours prior to symptoms onset or asymptomatic carriage to other people. Quarantine means you stay away from other humans for 14 days after a documented exposure. In the absence of a positive test or a negative test, I'm sorry, negative test. Masks and shields and eyewear. There's no doubt that masks not only protect you from acquiring COVID. They certainly prevent you from spreading COVID masks have been a superb public health initiative when it finally became appropriate and hammered home. And they work well. Eyewear is certainly appropriate in contact with any humans. Shields, we use shields in the hospital because for two reasons, they do protect our eyes from droplet and airborne exposure. But shields also keep you from touching your face. That's a really big issue. Everyone touches their face constantly and you may not think you do, but you do ask your spouse or the people around you, how often you touch your face. So shields do help us in in keeping us from touching our face. So in a in a risky environment, we wear shields. I have family members that live in New York City that ride the subway. I said, just protect yourself, wear your mask, wear a shield on the subway and wash your hands when you're done. That'll be very effective at preventing transmission in that environment, quite frankly. I would ride the subway with a face shield, a mask and washing my hands afterwards. We discussed close contact. Once again, exposure to COVID is all a question of density. How many humans or how many, how many droplets around you are are full of that virus? Number two, how much time you spend with that individual? And the quality of that time, sharing space, sharing droplets, sharing air. Eating, singing, large gatherings are the classic sites. If you can mitigate your exposure to gatherings during the next two months and it's very painful. And I can't tell you how painful it is. I don't know. I'm not, I'm doing that, but I do experience that, but this is an important discussion. Number one, I want to finish with a discussion of treatment. That's always under topic of discussion. Number one, steroids are the mainstay of treatment. The recovery trial from Great Britain clearly showed that Decadron use over a 10 day timeframe reduced mortality. That's the endpoint here mortality of COVID by 30%. We're using remdesivir. There's increasing debate about remdesivir. The original China data didn't look very impressive. The data from NIH and Gilead, over a thousand patients treated show it shortened their length of stay in the hospital, reduced mortality a little bit, but not significantly. Remdesivir now WHO, good doing the journal paper in October. So yes, it had limited of any benefit. Remdesivir use is driven by the won't hurt might help group. If I can shorten stay, decrease viral load, take the edge off that virus. Give the steroids a chance to kick in. That's how we're using remdesivir right now. It's being widely used. Convalescent plasma, I was a fan of this. I remain a fan of this. However, it really needs to be used early on in disease to prevent progression. I'm not using as much as I used to. The monoclonal antibodies you read about that our commander in chief at the time received during his events of Regeneron product. They're now multiple competing monoclonals. This is basically a juiced up convalescent plasma. In the in the fluid you obtain with that monoclonal are antibodies that neutralize the virus. The data on these monoclonal show it must be used very, very early on. And the indications FDA approval for emergency use authorization suggests it must be used. Within the first five to seven days of disease with minimal, if any, for example, only one symptom in high risk populations. I'm going to talk back about scenes. I do believe now the current two vaccines that are getting a lot of press, the Moderna and the Pfizer vaccines. The technology here is unique and new. They're taking messenger RNA, which is genetically material genetic material that's been. Created in the laboratory that mimics the RNA of the virus. They're injecting that RNA into your smooth muscle cells. And then your smooth muscle cells takes that RNA and creates viral capsid proteins. That then generates the immune response and therefore your protective antibodies. Remember the Pfizer product was first came out as a popular and potential vaccine candidate. Their study had 44,000 people in the phase three showed 90% efficacy. And of course, this week he came out saying 95% efficacy. The Moderna data showed 30,000 participants in their study, 15,000 got placebo, 15,000 got vaccine. In that study, 90 of the placebo patients got disease, five of the vaccinated patients got disease. That suggests a 95% efficacy. Pfizer quickly said, we have 95% efficacy also. Imagine that you want to be there with your competition. So this points out the fact that yes, it's 95% efficacious, but you can still get disease if you get the vaccine. That's true of influenza vaccine. You'll still get influenza, but it takes the edge off, blunts it. It's not as prominent, not as severe. I do think by December, we'll see distribution of one or both of these products. It will go to healthcare workers, frankly, first responders, first ERs, nurses, ambulance drivers. Those people that are just getting flooded with droplets, frankly, I'm pretty protected where I am. But I think we'll see it go through the healthcare arena first and those individuals in high risk. Extended care facility residents and extended care facility personnel. The current view is there are two doses, storage and distribution will be big issues, particularly with refrigeration needed. And and I think I don't see it hitting the general population probably till February, March, but that data remains to be discussed. I'm going to stop there and entertain any questions and. Go back to normal stuff here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, doctor. So I've got a few questions to ask. If I were to test positive, are there some things I can do to try and keep me out of the hospital?
I think if you test positive, the biggest concern are comorbid conditions, you know, elevated BMI or weight. Diabetes hypertension are well defined now as comorbid issues. So control your blood sugar, watch your blood pressure, take good care of your general health. There are some individuals that are pushing sort of non pharmacologic products, zincs, vitamin Ds. Both of those can be given in toxic doses. So I'd be very cautious encouraging that, quite frankly, it's not something we do. I think you need to keep an eye on your pulmonary status and take care of your health, eat well, fluids, fluids, fluids. This disease can also hit the GI tract. A lot of people coming in with gastroenteritis as a presenting symptom. So I would encourage you to keep your fluids up and prevent those issues that that's really all I can suggest. And have someone keep an eye on you, you know, have someone touch base with you. If you don't look good, don't feel well, see a healthcare provider.
And how do you know when you need to go to the hospital?
That's a really good question. The general answer should be whenever you don't feel well, you don't want everyone someone not accessing care. They're not the ones that should make the decision. You shouldn't make that decision. Certainly cough, shortness of breath, fever. It's the shortness of breath, which is the defining concerning sentinel pathology here and lung disease is what is leads to people's demise, frankly. So coughing and shortness of breath are certainly the key issues. You can be. Comfortable sitting in a chair and not short of breath, but if you get up to go to the bathroom and you're short of breath or you move a little bit. You really should be seen by a healthcare provider quickly. So I hope that that people with you can encourage you if if you're stubborn, for example.
So it sounds like first line of defense, you should be talking to your healthcare provider. Your internist, your general practice physician and. If in doubt, or you don't have a contact and you're short of breath or have other serious symptoms, get yourself to the ER, right?
Yes. Now, keep in mind, we're not seeing the healthcare system overwhelmed at this point in time. There's no longer a tent set up outside Christiana Hospital. But ERs are going to be packing in with this. It's going to be because flu season is hitting also. So my suggestion is if you go to an ER, you have to. There are medical aid units that can see you and your primary care provider can direct you somewhere which may be less congested and more open to access of care. Plus, Christiana and most hospitals have hotlines you can call to discuss your symptoms.
And doctor, how do I tell if I have COVID or the flu?
There's a lot of discussion on that now. You'll see some literature on that. There's no doubt that they have similar symptoms to begin with. Aches, pains, myelages, et cetera. Loss of taste and smell seems to be very much a sentinel event with COVID. A shortness of breath and coughing may be more prominent with COVID. With influenza, you get what's called cariza, a lot of congestion, the eyes and the nose, that may be a sign. But once again, it's not your job to determine that. We currently have testing available by PCR. In the emergency rooms that will test you simultaneously for influenza, A, B, RSV, upper respiratory viruses and COVID. So we can determine that. We've had one case that had flu and COVID at the same time and they did fine.
Thank you. So. A lot of people think, well, if I get COVID, it's just like getting the flu and you've put up a chart that shows. It's not like getting the flu. What in the patients that you've seen, what are the long term health effects if you do contract COVID? It's not like the flu where you might get better after a week or two, right?
No, I think that's a really good question. COVID, number one, you may feel like the flu, a little coughed and feel a little cold. COVID can rapidly progress. I've seen people that go from being normal in appearance on rounds in the morning. And by the evening, they're intubated in the ICU with a chest x ray that looks just horrendous. It can be a very rapidly progressive infection. Number two, there's clearly an evidence of prolonged post COVID disease states. Including the lung is the primary site of trouble. It's a vascular disease causes probably turns on some immune dysfunction in the lung. So we're seeing people now with prolonged pulmonary dysfunction, months after disease as well as other organs though. Definitely cardiac dysfunction, myocarditis, we're seeing lung disease, myocarditis and probably some renal disease from COVID. At this point in time, so there are many things going on. In fact, some sites are setting up post COVID monitoring centers. Hopkins has one now. I don't think Penn has one and Delaware has yet to create that issue, but I think we're seeing a lot of post COVID. Long term, quote, long haulers.
Thank you. And what if you have a partner or spouse or roommate who is feeling ill, but has not been tested? What should you do?
Number one, encourage testing. Number two, keep away from that individual, whether they have COVID or not, they might have influenza. And and you really need to use that as an opportunity to view how you look at all infectious diseases in that environment. So number one, keep away from that individual, isolate them, quarantine yourself. And if you are concerned about being in contact, testing is quite reasonable and it may reassure you with a negative test.
All right. Well, thank you. And I know you've already touched on this in your main presentation, but we all know the holidays are coming. We've got Thanksgiving and Christmas. And you mentioned weddings and funerals. People haven't seen their relatives for so long and I mean, what are the risks of attending holiday gatherings and celebrations outside your immediate family?
I think it's the highest risk event you could choose. I think that if you're in a space particularly. Not well ventilated with individuals that you don't know their prior experience and you don't know over 10, certainly. It's a high risk eating and talking and conversing. Eating and talking is high risk because you're you're really kind of letting the droplets go out there along with possible food particles. But you really have to, you really have to be careful. My, I mean, I just would, I, I don't go to any, I don't do anything. I mean, it sounds really. Like I'm boring, but I mean, I don't leave my house. I mean, I'll go to the grocery store. Grocery store is a lower risk event. Although there's some data showing that may not be the case anymore. But you really need over Thanksgiving and Christmas, this is going to be an awful time for a lot of people. And I can't tell you how to deal with it because keep in mind as we're in isolation fatigue, pandemic fatigue, we're seeing other. we're seeing other illnesses that are not being well-managed, that include cardiac disease, heart disease, pulmonary disease, but also psychiatric dysfunction, addiction medicine seeing a lot of issues. So it's really hard to balance that. And I'm not going to tell you to, to, to do something you can't do, but, but it really is important. Even close family, if they're exposed outside their environments, they're bringing that into you.
Thank you. And what about, if, if you've already had COVID, tested positive or been through an illness, can you, what's the latest research on whether you can get it again?
Yeah, the current data on that is, is coming to light. We look at people that with COVID that may remain positive for some time as recovered if they're not symptomatic. We are now describing reinfection as occurring in individuals, looking at a ninety-day window. So if you've had COVID, for example, in April, and you come back in ninety days later with a symptom complex similar to COVID with a continued positive assay, that is felt to be a possible reinfection. We've had, I, I've seen one potential, not well-defined. So there is some discussion, you can acquire this disease a second time. Now, that's distinctly unusual, frankly, and, and it's not the rule, but that is possible.
Okay. And I remember talking to you earlier, it was your view, at least at the time, that the immunity is likely to last for some time. And I think I read something in the New York Times this morning about how people might be immune for over a year.
I, I would hope a year. If this follows the typical scientific basis of every known virus, and this one doesn't seem to mutate like influenza does. So your immunity should last. The question may be more an issue of, does the virus change a bit? Or some individuals, their immunity wanes over time. There's no, we don't know the answer to that. So I think at least a year, but never say never. We won't know for a little while.
All right. What about air travel? I know people are longing to travel and go on vacations, subject to quarantine rules, of course. What, what's the current thinking about? I, I take it you would advise against travel if the choice is there, but if people either have to travel or are going to travel, what's your, what's the current thinking about flying?
The last I reviewed air travel was some time ago. I think that it's high-risk. The air is circulated, although filtered. It all, it's a question of who's sitting next to you. I, I've advised people if they travel to wear gloves, a mask and a face shield on the airplane. That is optimal protection, frankly.
All right, thank you. If, if you have a child coming home from school for the holidays, how do you recommend you manage the household in that situation?
That's a really difficult question. I really hope you wouldn't hear that question today. So some schools, some colleges and other schools are testing their students on a regular basis. For example, twice a week, some institutions. I think that the optimal way to handle it would be to have that individual tested prior to coming home. And then if they are tested negative, you can feel somewhat safe in that environment, but I would encourage you to have that individual wear a mask and stay six feet away from you while they're in the household. I, I think that's stringent, but appropriate.
Okay, at least until they got a negative test, I guess, right?
Well, one negative test is one negative test. If they're going to be home for the extended timeframe, a second test five to seven days later would be appropriate. But once you're at the fourteen-day course of time, then you're dealing with quarantine time and you're safe at that point.
All right. And if, if you have someone in your household who has an underlying condition such as asthma, what do you recommend to keep that person safe? I guess the obvious answer to that question is they should limit their contact with people outside the household. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. And so final question, doctor, I know, I know you need to run to something else. When are we going to get out of this mess?
I, I'm sorry, I can't hear you, you must be muted. It, it's a, I, I really wish I knew. I, I project that December, January, February, it could be very difficult months for this state and for the states that are currently already swamped by this. They're, they're seeing overwhelmed healthcare systems in, in the Midwest. I think January, February, March will be difficult. I'm hoping we see vaccination, but the vaccination is not going to end this process because it needs to be distributed, certainly until next summer. I think we'll be dealing with some degree of isolation and strategically cautiously shut down environments. It's, 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 that's a tough balance. Now, I'm not making those, those decisions.
All right, well, thank you so much, doctor. And we know your time is, is valuable and precious, and we, we really appreciate you spending it with us. And just for the people in the judicial branch that are watching this, Dr. Bacon has been working with us. He's, he's actually been to the courthouse and looked around and looked at our protective measures and has also looked at how we're responding to the virus for employees and people inside and outside the courthouse. And we can't thank him enough for the good advice he's given us to try and keep people as safe as possible. We all know that just because of the nature of the disease, there are going to be exposures that happen in our judicial facilities, but we think we're managing them appropriately and in accordance with the CDC guidelines and advice from Dr. Bacon. So, doctor, once again, thank you so much for your time. We'll probably ask you to come back.
Oh, you're welcome. I appreciate it. And I'm happy to have an opportunity to share my thoughts with you, and you're all doing a really, really good job, I think. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much.